Yeah, because it gets boring just doing the upgrades, the updates.
Any more questions or anything for me on this item? I have a couple more policies to talk about next, but those are the separates. I'm gonna let the board vote on these first.
Is there a motion to approve this policy on, um, uh, these policies, the most recent policies as revised?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded? Voice vote sufficient?
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries?
So we're calling this policy realignment, because these are a little bit different. Four fifty, four eighty, and six sixty were all a little unique. I just talked about six sixty and the last item. There's some substantial language that needed to be included there because it was substantial. I wanted to start fresh with that one. Let's look at that on first reading. Also because we had four fifty and four eighty, we talked about those pretty extensively last time. I'm not going into detail on those. They were included in the most recent present day, but because we made some changes after the meeting last time, I'm gonna send them back for first reading and start again. So, under this agenda item, recommending that four fifty, four eighty, and six sixty board policies are approved on first reading as presented.
So do you need a motion to waive the second reading?
If the board chooses to waive the second reading, can do that. It's been the board's practice to do on two readings. Our plan was to do it on two readings because we've got a meeting in two weeks. And that would declare the ballot, so to speak.
Okay.
That would call the board's protocol, and then you would start with this next round that we need to do. That would be my recommendation, but the board can approve on one reading if the board would like to do that.
Here's my thinking is we're correcting an error from 2008. We might as well get rid of the books as soon as possible. I'm fine with following the formal process of two readings to make huge difference today.
So, I mean, we could just let the first reading stand, and then we'll hold on this next time it comes up for two weeks. Our next meeting.
March is a little different, remember, because of spring break, we're using that first meeting date, March 12th, and then the second one. So it's just a, just a short two weeks away.
Sure, that's fine. So I guess, I, at this time, I will, do I do the board members do what hurts?
In the past, we've just, we've just, we're saying, yeah, we just kept at that first reading with, uh, with the notice that we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
If there's no changes or no comments, we'll keep them the same and we'll bring it back to the board for second reading on March 12th. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. That's my question to turn the floor over to Gary Zaboka. Gary's our consultant who's helping us with the strategic planning process. And he's gonna talk a little bit about the community survey results.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Well, actually, that's not really true. It's terrible evening. It's good to see everyone out and was able to make it here safely tonight, so thanks. I've got a handout with me that I consider to be an executive summary of the slides that you were sent earlier regarding the community survey that was administered back in late November, early December. And this hopefully will provide some overview and also hopefully in the way that I present it, we'll be able to kind of share some general themes, if you will, that I would like to highlight, you know, tonight in general.
Is it working?
You have to be the superintendent to make it work.
Oh, man, I hope not. I hope not. Say what? You tell me when to advance the slide, Gary. Worked on the other PowerPoint.
We can go ahead and advance it then. So, we've got a number of pages there. It just kind of incorporates what all was included in this report for you. So I'm gonna go ahead and skip through those pieces. Mr. Wilder, if you don't mind, just kind of go through the next couple until we get to. Go through that one. You can go through that one. Survey totals. Okay, I'm gonna stop right here for a moment. You can even stop right there. That would be fine. Either, either of them. That's good.
Okay.
So basically what we did is we surveyed your entire community. And in so doing, we gave a variety of different options for them to go ahead and check what they are a part of. The challenge with doing a survey like that is that what happens is you've got about twenty different subgroups here. So if you're looking to disaggregate data at all, it makes it very difficult because what it does, if you're a parent and a staff member, you'd be in a different category than if you were just a parent and/or a staff member. So we chose to go to the next slide, please, Mr. Wilder. And what this did is it combined to make fewer areas. And as you're taking a look then at the data, if you want to do a little bit deeper dive, kind of disaggregates the data a little bit more. You see the section in green is parents, and that's seventy percent of the data. However, also in there are those parents who are also staff members. So they are in fact parents who did respond, but they're also staff members. Some of them also included that they were community members in there as well. You'll see the navy blue section in the upper left is the number of student responses that you had. About sixteen percent of the survey was responded to by your survey, by your students. And that was primarily your middle school and your high school students that submitted responses for that. Then the other categories are all just a breakdown of those other what we'd call singletons. You had staff members. Those who were only staff, though, for example, only amounted to about five percent. Community members, only about five percent. Then the others were mixtures there. Nonetheless, tonight we're looking at the data overall, in total. So, but I just wanted to let you know that those were pretty much how the categories were broken out. So we're gonna go through the next several, if you don't mind. Mr. Wilder, just keep going through. Again, you've got this data available. This is, the schools selected by the students, like we said, it was the middle school or the high school students. And you can see by and large it was the high school students that almost, by ratio of roughly three to one, completed the survey compared to the middle school students. Maybe that's just, maybe that's comparable to the numbers between the high school and the middle school. Because the middle school was only two grades that took it, so. Years of service, the staff members that took it, how many years they've been on a part of the school district. You can see there, you've got a large number of people who have been here a good number of years. Locations are where their students, which schools their students went to, or what schools they're most affiliated with, the staff members. So you can see there, it's a pretty, well, it looks like a pinwheel. That means it's pretty evenly responded to throughout. Students, those are the grade levels. Again, the upper left, the navy blue is your twelfth grade students. Were the largest number that submitted responses, and it was your sixth graders that had the least. So, moving a little bit further along, go to the next one if you would please. I'm gonna primarily stick to the pie charts, so we'll be doing pretty much every other one. You can go to the, to the next one. So the rating totals overall were what we're going to focus in on initially to check and see what were any significant responses that we found as a result of the survey. Again, in total, you had just over five hundred, in fact, it was five hundred and thirteen respondents overall. And as such, what we did is we looked at all of the ratings that we received from those five hundred and thirteen and broke those down. Since this survey has never been administered before in this district, we need to find some benchmark data. In other words, what seemed to be the average responses from the group at large to be able to determine what that is. What we found, and if you want to go ahead now and take a look at the handout that I provided, up at the top, we've combined strongly agree and agreed. About sixty-two percent of the responses overall to all the questions were strongly agree or agreed, okay? The N stands for neutral. People didn't have an opinion one way or the other, and that was about twenty-four percent. That's about a quarter overall that didn't have opinions on a number of the questions. And you'll see as we go through the different items that they were asked about, how those numbers go up in some of those categories and some of those numbers go down in certain categories. And then finally, the right-hand column on your handout is disagree or strongly disagree. And to that, overall, fourteen percent either disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statements that they were presented to respond to in the survey. So if we're to take a look at the very first item, and I'm gonna go through all twenty, but do it relatively quickly. Take a look at the first item. This one was the question was, is the district committed to high-quality education? Okay? What you see there, the numbers that you see on your sheets, seventy-two percent, okay? Almost three-quarters agreed or strongly agreed that the district is committed to high-quality education. Okay, that's reassuring for those of us in the education profession. You've got seventeen of them, seventeen percent that are neutral. They're not sure one way or the other. And then you had eleven percent, which is, you know, roughly, you know, one in ten, that disagreed or strongly disagreed that your district has, is committed to high-quality education. Overall, that was skewed a little bit higher, if you will, than the benchmark overall. So that's one that would be a question that upon looking at that, or a statement, I should say, a statement that overall, you could pretty much rest assured that based on all the responses to this survey, your community felt that the district is committed to high-quality education. So I'm not gonna go through that explanation necessarily with everyone, but I just kind of wanted to set the tone for what we're looking at with these various numbers. In fact, I can go so far as to say is the next, the first six questions, numbers one through six, for the most part deal with your district's academic programs, okay? And it's not the programs per se, just academically, how are we performing? So, Mr. Wilder, if you go to number two, take a look. District provides equal opportunities for success. You know, again, we've got sixty percent agreeing or strongly agreeing. We've got a lesser number of neutral, but this time we got a slightly higher number disagreeing. We've got twenty percent that are disagreeing that the district provides equal opportunities for success. That's an avenue. That's an area that we probably want to drill down a little bit further and see why that would be. Okay, why don't they feel that way? Going on to the next one, we've got the high academic standards. Again, these fall within the realm, if you will, of the benchmark data that we kind of set forth. Sixty-one percent agree or strongly agree that the district has high academic standards. Only twelve percent don't feel that way, and the rest are neutral. Same thing with the next one, question number four. You're taking a look at a high quality, high-quality education with given the resources that you have in your district. Again, sixty-two percent agree or strongly agree that you do have a high-quality program, given the resources. Twelve percent disagree, and again, you've got about a quarter that are neutral on that particular question. Finally, the last question that deals with the academics. I'm sorry, no, this is the last one. We got two more. Preparing students for their future. This is one that there was a higher number of neutral responses. This is a question that I think, and you may feel it as, so students here in the district and/or just about society in general, how well are we doing overall preparing kids for the future? We had, and this one was lower than your other academic stories. Only fifty-two percent agreed or strongly agreed that we are preparing, that you are preparing students for the future. Only sixteen percent didn't agree, but again, that neutral number, thirty-two percent, that's almost a third, aren't sure. And I think the question there is, you know, how well in general, what are those? How can we best be preparing kids for the future? So that might be one to drill down a little bit further about as well and look a little bit more closely at some additional data to see if we could find out what more we can be doing to better prepare your students for the future. Looking at number six, we've got supporting academic development of students. And again, there, there's a high number of neutral responses to that one. The disagreement responses are within the benchmark, and so too are the agreed-upon within the benchmark. But you've got a higher number of neutral ones there, as you can tell, looking at the picture. You've got a big gray area there. And again, so the question is, how best can we support the academic development of our students? So those were the primary questions that dealt with the academic pieces of things. The next four questions dealt with overall social, emotional, and behavioral of students. So going on to number seven, the question is, does the district treat each of the students equitably? Not equally, but the term was equitably was the question that was asked. Fifty-four percent agreed or strongly agreed, twenty-four percent disagreed or strongly disagreed. Okay? Then the neutral was pretty much where the neutral has been. So here we have a little bit lower agreeing and a little bit higher in the disagreement. I think some of this may be in the question of what does that mean as far as treating each student equally? That's a big question. Please, Eric.
I'm sorry I'm lagging as I jump between slides. Going back to question five, really quick, the preparing students for their future.
Yes.
Is there a reason that student responses aren't shown in that presentation? Were they purposely omitted, or was that just an oversight?
Are they, you can go to the, go to number, question five, if you will, Mr. Wilder, at the bottom.
There's just not a bar chart for them. I just didn't know if they didn't answer that question because it was about them and you wanted everyone else's perspective, or if they, their data just.
You know what? We use the same standard responses for all of them, except for the students with the question that only pertained to the students. We probably can find the data on that, but for the presentation purposes, it was about their grade question.
I'm just curious how the students felt about us preparing them for their future.
Yes, if you'll take a look at all of our charts, which you do have access to, I'm not dwelling on those. The student responses per se were not incorporated in there. But they only were for the one student, the one question that only pertained to students. You'll see that way.
So they're not in there at all? They didn't get?
No, the data is in there. It's just not broken down on this chart.
Okay.
Okay. They're not disaggregated by just students.
That's what I said.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so if we can go back to number, actually to number eight. So this question then was actually in general for the district. It, does a district promote respectful behavior toward each other? This isn't specifically towards students, it's just toward each other in general. And you'll see, this was one of your district's higher scores. Sixty-six percent agreed or strongly agreed. Fifteen percent, which was pretty much that consistent benchmark number, stayed the same there for disagreement, and a little bit lower neutral. So people kind of skewed more toward the fact that the district does promote respectful behavior toward each other. Looking at number nine, the behavioral expectations for students. I can tell you that from the work that we do with school districts primarily, this is one that consistently we're seeing lower scores about regarding behavioral expectations for students. Your district was, you know, slightly more than half agreed that there are high behavioral expectations for students, but you also had twenty percent, twenty-one percent to be exact, that didn't feel that high behavioral expectations are there for students. Okay? The neutral number there was pretty much in that consistent neutral range that we have seen. But I want to offset that one by looking at question number ten, which talks about the support of social, emotional development of kids. Helping students know how to handle themselves in given search situations. And here you've got sixty percent agreeing or strongly agreeing that that development is there for, for the students. Whereas you've got, the other numbers are within the ranges of what the benchmarking data typically was showing. Okay? So that pretty much concludes that behavior, social, emotional piece of it. Nothing largely significant, a couple of items worth taking a look at a bit. If we look at number eleven, as a board in particular, this is one that, you know, may raise your eyebrows, yet at the same time, again, doing this type of survey amongst other districts, you know, throughout Northern Illinois, is the question of fiscally responsibility, fiscal responsibility. And here you see that forty-five percent only agreed or strongly agreed that the district is fiscally responsible. You've got twenty-one percent, which is considering how low the agreed number is, is relatively low. What you have here, though, is one of those where people are neutral. They really don't know how responsible your district is financially at this time. And that's not uncommon. That's one of the things that as we talk about potential things to, for the district to strive toward, it's something that can be looked at further as to how can we help more people understand that you as a board, you meet here every month, the meetings are open, people have access to all kinds of information. Why don't they better understand or know, you know, that your district is fiscally responsible? Okay? And be able to report that out in a survey. Okay, so that's number eleven. Number twelve is hires and retains excellent employees. You've got just over half of those who took the survey agreeing or strongly agreeing. Here, too, is another one where you've got a high number of neutral. People aren't sure. They don't know, they don't want to say you do, they don't want to say you don't. They've taken that middle of the road. And the question would be to dig down a little bit deeper on that and ask, you know, why can't they commit one way or the other to say the district does or the district doesn't? Rather than take that middle road, because almost a third of them did in this particular case. Okay? Going on to question thirteen, actually thirteen through seventeen, all pretty much deal with facilities in different ways, shapes, and forms. Number thirteen deals with a safe environment for students and employees. This was, you know, highly rated, almost seventy percent, sixty-eight to be exact, agree or strongly agree that this place, district-wide, is a safe environment for students and employees. Only fourteen percent disagreed or strongly disagreed. And then again, we had that number in the middle which remained neutral. Now I will say your next three questions are your highest rated questions overall from an agreement standpoint. And that is question fourteen, where people were asked, you know, does your district offer adequate learning spaces, classrooms, libraries, et cetera, for students to learn? Seventy-seven percent agreed that you did. Only eight percent, single digits, these are the only questions that we asked just about that had single digits, disagreeing with that. So they feel that you've got adequate learning spaces. And then the next question, number fifteen, that you have adequate extracurricular indoor spaces. Okay, that was seventy-seven percent as well. And again, only nine percent disagreeing. Question sixteen, asked about adequate extracurricular spaces outdoors, in various fields and so on for practices and such. Here, too, you had seventy-six percent agree and only ten percent disagree. Now, let me go ahead and preface the comment on this next question, number seventeen. Don't want to mislead anybody by any means. The question was just raised. Would you support a referendum for facility upgrades? Of the people who responded, those five hundred and thirteen, you actually had fifty-five percent who said that they would. You only had seventeen percent who said that they wouldn't, but you had twenty-eight percent that said they were neutral and weren't sure. So, from, again, if I'm sitting where you're sitting, if I'm using polling data, not that you're even interested in pursuing this at this time, I honestly don't know whether or not you are, but if you were, right now, the winds look favorable to even that as an option to consider if you're even looking to, to consider, okay, based on that limited survey data. Next couple of questions, three of them actually deal with technology. These were the other highly rated areas. Number eighteen asked if the district promotes technology for learning. Eighty-eight percent agreed or strongly agreed, okay? That's significant, significantly high, believe that the district's doing a good job of promoting technology for learning. You only had two percent who didn't agree at all. And then there was ten percent that were in the middle. Next question, number nineteen, had to do with the support for that technology and the maintenance and repair of that technology. Again, you had seventy percent agreed that you got those things in place. Doing the survey in other districts, this is usually the one, the first, the first technology question usually has a higher rating. The second one, it drops considerably. Yours did not drop that significantly. It's a little bit lower, but for the most part, people believe that there is adequate support for maintain and repair of your technology. And less than ten percent disagreed with that. And then finally, question number twenty, asked if there was, if education is improved due to technology. Again, sixty-five percent of those who took the survey agreed or strongly agreed that it does. Only ten percent didn't, and the rest were in the middle. So then going on to just the last couple of questions, these pretty much deal with community or communication. Number twenty-one, foster relationships, partnerships with the community. Only fifty-three percent, a little more than half, felt that the district does an adequate job of fostering those relationships and partners with the community. The amount that disagreed, disagreed were below that threshold of fourteen, it was only thirteen. But again, you've got about a third of your population in the middle, not really sure. Not taking one stance one way or the other as far as how well the district is fostering relationships and partnerships with the community. Question twenty-two, communicates effectively with community? This is a higher mark than I get from some of the other districts that we work with. You've got sixty-one percent agreeing or strongly agreeing that overall the district communicates effectively with the community. You've only got sixteen percent that disagree, and twenty-three percent on that one are neutral. And then finally, the very last question that was only posed to students. And that is, does the district communicate effectively with students? And these were students in grade six through twelve. Now, I'm not sure how many of us have kids. Before I give the responses to that, you can take a look at them yourselves. But I can remember being the father of a middle school through high school student. If they were to ask my kids, how well do your parents communicate with you? My kids would say, probably not so well. That's only my, my home. I don't know if your household is any different. Point here being, asking the students, forty-four percent. Point here being, asking the students, forty-four percent of the students agreed or strongly agreed that the district communicates effectively with students. Twenty percent, okay, only half of that number disagreed. But again, you had more than a third that were neutral. They didn't give a strong opinion one way or the other. Okay? So overall, those were the pictures that we saw come to light as a result of your survey. We have more data to be able to dig more deeply. But we wanted to, in this first demonstration of the data, kind of give you just the ten thousand foot view and then give it an opportunity to come back. We could come back and say, well, we've looked more into the data and here's what we found and potentially look at even some identification of some goals that you may look at and or consider as a board and as an administration to look to move forward with in order to improve your district. There are definitely some things that were rated better than others. And again, not having done this survey before, it's, it's difficult to tell exactly how your community responds overall to surveys. You know, the fact that we had over five hundred respondents. From our company's standpoint, we've done other districts comparable sizes. That's a pretty good return survey wise. Whether or not you would think that's a good return for you, you would know that better than we would. And I'd be welcome to engage in that conversation or to follow up with Mr. Wilder on that later on. Something else that you may consider, I'm only going to put this out for food for thought. And this isn't Gary proactively promoting the company by any means. But this would be the type of survey to consider doing, if not annually, every other year. Just to see if you were to ask these same questions a year from now or two years from now, based on whatever actions the district chooses to take in between, will the data look much different, you know, moving forward? So this kind of establishes that baseline data which is, you know, typically you need to start somewhere. So this is kind of where we're starting. I'm not sure if there's anything in particular that surprised you or disappointed you one way or the other. But I'm more than glad to answer whatever questions that you may have after this, this first run, run through of the initial data.
My question would be, from here out to getting goals, what are the next steps we would need to take?
Sure. Great question. And the next steps typically would be, like I said, drilling down in some of these areas to identify if we could find out some more what we call root causes to the responses that we receive. One of the things I wanted to mention as well, because you've got a fairly high neutrality rate, okay? People don't seem to know. Oftentimes in our minds, that conjures up the question of, how are we communicating some of these things with our community, with our staff, with our parents? And almost to the point where we'd rather have them tell us yes or tell us no, but don't be in the middle because we don't know how to respond to that. And therefore, how do we address those neutral responses? And because you've got several that are, you know, at or approaching that either quarter of your population that took the survey, up to about a third of them have responded neutrally. How do we target them to be able to ensure that they're informed well enough to be able to respond to a survey in a way that would be beneficial?
I'm just wondering, do you recommend town halls or to get the community engaged so they would know more?
Okay, so that's the step after the goal setting process. In other words, if we establish a goal that we need to increase communication to our constituents, stakeholders, et cetera, then that would be the step to then identify, so what means might we have to be able to do that? So that's a couple of steps down the road. Or newsletters, that too could be a possibility down the road, provided the board agrees that communication needs to be in focus. Yeah, and then it's, then how do you do that? So, so we kind of start at the ten thousand. We come down to five, then we try to hit it right at around level that will impact those constituents, for the students, parents, community members, et cetera, that we'd like to be able to impact.
Have you found by doing this that sometimes the people in the middle or are neutral just don't really care? You know, because they're just like, they're like, well, I'll take this survey, but I don't want to commit myself because I, I don't know and I don't really care to know. I want to go on about my own life and I don't want to put myself here or there.
That typically can be the response, but your percentages are higher than, I would say, number of the districts that we've worked with.
Okay.
So I'm not sure why they would be more ambivalent here than they would be somewhere else. So I wouldn't say necessarily, in some cases, maybe they don't care and where they don't want to commit. But in other cases, they may just not know. Okay? Sometimes in this survey in particular, we utilize the term neutral right in between strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree. Sometimes we actually put don't know and that's a little bit more clear. But in this particular case, it was agreed upon to leave neutral as that response. So we're not sure if they truly don't know, if they're ambivalent and or need more information. Yeah, great question.
Was there anything about the way that the subgroups responded that was or was not surprising? I mean, if I look at a couple of trends in there quickly, it seems that like in general, the students seem to think a little bit more highly than the parents or teachers do about the expectations placed on them, the communicate, you know, that sort of stuff. You look at the other end of the spectrum and the people that are least satisfied with the fiscal responsibility and behavioral expectations was commonly the, the, the teaching staff. Are those consistent with what you see in other districts, the way those groups think about themselves?
They are. It's not unusual for staff to report lower on fiscal responsibility. Okay, as a, as a trend, okay, as a general trend. Primarily because they look at their group and they look at the district as a whole and they would like to think that, you're talking to a former superintendent as well, that maybe we're not getting as much as we should be, so therefore we're not being fiscally responsible as we should.
Even when those groups make up suddenly eighty percent of the budget?
Exactly.
That that's consistent across districts?
Yeah, and that eighty percent is consistent across districts of any size.
Sure.
You know, whether you're small or large, still about eighty percent that make up your personnel.
So basically all the trends were pretty consistent.
Trends were pretty consistent here. Again, the challenge was also the fact that there were as many options as there were, that it was really hard to drill down further. We have the opportunity to do that a bit more and that would be the next phase of our conversation. And again, given an opportunity to share more with you, to drill down a bit deeper next time with some actual suggestions slash recommendations.
What, what's the district's definition or basis for consensus? Is that something we're going to decide right now?
No, actually consensus is difficult in this kind of setting primarily because it's a random survey that was administered and there was no previous benchmarking. We can look at those definitions, we include those in there for physical purposes. But as far as actually reaching a consensus, the consensus is what the majority of your leadership believes are those primary things based on the data that we have that need to be focused. That becomes your consensus when you're in agreement with those pieces.
Just as I'm just looking at this data, the, if this list, you've, you've separated out like the, the core performers of this, just based on what I'm looking at, are the ones that are the lowest strongly agree would be eleven. Fiscal responsibility, behavioral expectations for students, communications.
Right. For the most part, you know, the, the benchmark of sixty-two up to the top, I pretty much looked at the plus or minus five on those. So for example, anything that was below fifty-seven and that stronger in that strong, strongly agree, agree column would be worth taking a second look at. Under neutral, twenty-four, again, plus or minus five on that would be those that we would take a little bit more closely, closer look at. And then on the disagree or strongly disagree, plus or minus five on that to see what are those areas. You know, for, for what it's worth, I didn't want to predispose anybody, but I've got mine highlighted on there. Primarily, and, and you can do that, you know, on your own as well because obviously you're, you're all well intentioned and want nothing but the best for the district as well. But what are those that, you know, may raise questions for you? I would think that we'd be relatively consistent if we use those same metrics in general, the plus or minus five for each of those categories, which are the ones that stand out and which might we need to look a little bit more closely at to see if we can identify why that is. And then more importantly, what can we do about it moving forward?
You wouldn't say that the strongly agree and agree are lower than typical? I, I guess it just seems to me a lot are around half agree, which means half either don't, don't know or don't agree. Is that normal or are we, is it, are we a little higher than typical? But I guess it's hard because we don't have a base.
It's hard, you don't have a baseline. So your baseline was sixty percent. I will tell you, there's districts that we've worked with for a few years that have a baseline of seventy-five percent. So fifty percent would look significantly low to them. Your baseline is at sixty-two at this point. When we take a look at that plus or minus five, looking at just about fifty, you know, fifty-six, fifty-seven there, which is just more than half. As the leadership, the governing board, are you comfortable with that level at this point? And I would say at this point, being a first year administrator, we've got to start somewhere. Let's look at, you know, the iceberg is this big. Which are the tips that we can begin to whittle down versus look at everything? You, you've got to identify certain areas that you like to focus on first. And those would be those areas that are more significant than the others. And when I say significant, significant to that baseline data that we have.
Do you know why so few employees responded? I know like twenty employees.
Well, again, keep in mind that those employees that are parents are in the parents' responses. Okay, so, so they increase that number to an extent.
Okay, it's like forty-four, it's not too much. It just seems like that would be like really useful to know, like I mean, there's four, four hundred some district employees.
Sure. And I think that's a very legitimate question. We didn't actually administer the survey, we just provided the survey. And don't know for sure how it was administered. But typically, you know, it's provided to the staff, encouraged to respond to it, reminders to respond to it by the deadline, et cetera. We're not exactly sure what, you know, was the process here.
So Gary and his, and his colleagues shared the survey with us. We converted it to JotForm if I remember correctly, so that we could easily send out that program, that software that we're, we're used to. So that's exactly what we did. We sent it out to the staff, there were some reminders, I think it went out in the exchange, which is our, our weekly, every Wednesday, that goes out to all of our staff. So it's, it was in there. So I, I would say we did it exactly how Gary described. You know, it was done, it's digital, easy to get to, appeared more than once, you know, with some reminder. So it's a good question, you know, why, why would a respondent percentage of staff be so low?
Sometimes I will say that can be a result and I'm not saying that's the case because I don't know your district that well. Sometimes it's part of the culture of the district. Oh, another survey, we're not going to do it.
I was thinking about ninety-two, Wade's answer. If you look at that first pie chart on page six and count everything that's got some level of employment as one of their roles.
Non-certified's eighteen, certified's twelve.
Yeah, there's a bunch on the left side, you've got parent, comma, certified employee, you've got parent, certified employee, community member, you've got, uh, parent, guardian, certified employee. Like they can be numbers of multiple groups, if you add them all up, I just gave up with ninety-two.
Okay.
So it might be hard to.
They're closer than I think they are.
Maybe not.
Yeah, so ninety-two's a percentage of the whole group.
With a survey like this, what that high level of neutral people seems to indicate to me is that, and you alluded to this, that they don't, they don't know what we're, what we're asking. And I wonder if the people that are agreeing and disagreeing are agreeing and disagreeing to the same things that we're thinking they're agreeing and disagreeing to. And how do we know the reliability of the survey if we don't have a common definition of each of these things that we're asking? Well, there's got to be a certain amount of trust within the survey itself. I mean, the questions were not that challenging of questions. I understand what you're saying, especially as it relates to certain terms. So for example, if you're talking about social emotional development, does everyone know and or recognize what that means? Okay, so some may just be agreeing, some may be agreeing and knowing what they're agreeing to. Some may be disagreeing because they're not really even sure what that is. But if I don't know what it is, we must not be doing it, type of thing. So, you know, there's some of that. And that's where, like I said, this was the ten thousand foot view. Now, based on the fact that we've shared this with you, we'd like to go back and look a little bit more deeply and be able to report out what more we have found as we look at more closely disaggregating that data and some of the other information that we may have found as a result. But some of it has to be, you know, high academic standards. You know, what may be high academic standards for you may not be for you, Eric. But yet at the same time, we all can relate to what high academic standards typically mean. Are we pushing and or promoting our students academically? Okay? Whether or not they're high or not, fact of the matter is, you know, you've got almost two thirds of your people saying that, that you do have it. I mean, that's the good thing. And that's one of the few questions.
It's a good thing provided they know.
Well, right, but they're not disagreeing either.
Well, yeah, but I, 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 what I'm questioning is whether they understand either way enough to answer the question.
Yeah.
And so I guess the ultimate question that I would have would be, is it worth it to take time to work among people in the district and, and some of these groups to come to a common understanding of what these all need?
You raised a good question and, you know, to that extent, there are other ways that one can do that. You know, one of the things that we had mentioned is just general communication. What does that look like? And how is that demonstrated and provided on a semi-regular basis? You know, you can get a newsletter from the superintendent. I know you do a lot of communicates, you know, in general, not only to the staff, but to the community, the parents, et cetera. You know, FYI, high academic standards are, and your definition, you know, okay? Will they all see that? Will they all read that? That's where, you know, again, there's got to be a certain amount of trust. You know, again, looking at seven board members, at least six of you, you may not all necessarily agree what that is either. But given the question, if I can say I agree or I disagree or I'm not sure, I'm going to be neutral, you're going to respond one way. And again, there's that certain amount of trust with any survey. I mean, we've all taken many surveys. They're just meant to be a thumbnail sketch of what information we're looking to solicit from our constituency. And you've got to, again, hope and trust and then you reinforce that as best you can as you move forward. Yeah? And that's why I'm saying if you do it on a regular basis, uh, the survey, annual, every other year, you get a better picture overall of what people know, what people understand, and then how they reach your district.
Yeah, I I would think it, I think my personal perspective is it's just people who say we're neither excelling nor nor not excelling, underperforming.
Yeah.
Um, and I would think maybe if it were more, we don't understand the question, that you might see a larger group of, say, you know, parents or community members answering neutral, maybe aren't involved in Lingo every day, whereas we see even the certified and, um, you know, non-certified answering about the same amount with that same level of ambivalence or or neutrality, so. I would think hopefully that they understand these these questions, therefore answering it, oh, I don't know what that means, but I'm just.
Well, again, we did give people opportunity to respond via comments, and we do have, that's the drilling down deeper then, is being able to look and see what did they say in response to some of these questions that will shed some light as to what they individually may be feeling, and you could rest assured, if there are individuals who are feeling some of those things, chances are there's others as well that may be feeling that way. Again, you take the data that you have to work with, and then you make certain judgments based on those and decisions. Nothing that you're not going to want to do as a board.
One thing I just noticed, um, looking at this pie chart, I think it's on slide six, is it looks like only twenty-four of the respondents were not affiliated with the district, um, directly, meaning they didn't have a student or work for the district, they were just a community member at large. Is that low? To me, that's almost discerningly low, and it maybe shows that we need to get this survey out to people that aren't involved in the district.
You raise a great point, and that is, when you're asking your community in general, who may or may not have kids involved, where are they getting their information at all about the district? Do they have the neighbor's kids that they're talking to, or their neighbors, um, that they're getting the information to and or from? So therefore, you know, you've got community members, and I think that number, you know, I remember that, like, twenty-four community members may have responded that weren't affiliated with any other group. Their responses, you know, are part of this, obviously, and, you know, so to that end, how do they respond? You know, how now full and informed are they, and are they as much as they should and or could be, uh, in order to respond, uh, in an articulate way? And I would just say that, you know, again, making a practical example of this is if any of you are simply community members, okay, you don't have kids in the school at all, how do you judge how well the school is doing? Take a look at the general behaviors of those kids, how are they responding and so on, and you make your judgments accordingly. If your neighbor's got bad kids, you're gonna think, the school's not doing their job. Won't mention their parents, of course, but the school's not doing their job, because it always comes back to the school. Yet, at the same time, um, you know, some of these other pieces, especially the social emotional pieces, how well do they meet, meet and get along with other people? And that's an important piece as well. And actually, that's one of the items that your district came out, um, higher than some of the other districts that we've worked with. You've got a very favorable rating there, sixty percent, you're doing a good job of that.
I just think, like, to your point, Alex, like, I think of the anthropic principle, and like, the idea of like, if a tree falls in the woods, doesn't make a sound if there's no one around to hear it, and like, to the point of, like, the, from the vantage point of an observer who doesn't participate in a survey, should, does their voice matter? And if they don't make a voice, then how can we observe it? And so then how can we make decisions based on a voice not made? And so, like, if we're gonna sit here and wonder about the efficacy of a survey, when people have had an opportunity to make their voice heard, and we have data, and we have a, we have a pattern, it would only be reasonable to apply the anthropic principle and say, okay, let's use this data, because the collection method was trusted to an expert. And so, we should make all of our decisions, uh, with that data at the forefront, since we call ourselves a data-driven district. So I, to me, I'm comfortable, uh, with the responses. I don't think the questions are too difficult. I think you have not limited who could reply to the survey, so.
I'd like to see your fust there, Mr. DeVito, if I could just interject, you know, as you're saying that, I'm also thinking that if I'm a community member and I get a survey like this and I don't care, I don't have to even waste my time.
Exactly.
Yeah, but if I consider myself a community member, they've asked, I wanna take the time and do the best that I can given what I, so, thank you.
Well, I guess that's my question, though. Did, um, did community members have access to the survey, or was it just sent to people signed up to the four-two-seven, um, email database?
Yeah, again, we did administer, I have to defer to Mr. Wilder.
It was harder to get it out to the community because we don't have those email addresses, or it was all sent electronically.
Yeah.
It was available, so if somebody from the community, um, you know, we we didn't just make it available to to staff, let's say, for for example. But I think Gary's point is is really good, and when you don't have kids in the district, um, maybe you moved into the district, kids didn't grow up here, you're just kind of disconnected, so you don't have a neighbor, just to say the community survey just came out, you know, sharing that link or look for that link, so. It was available for everybody, but it was probably more targeted, not intended, but it was probably more targeted to people who have a connection to the district because the, that's the contact information. So, Gary, just one kind of question.
Sure.
Um, as we're thinking about next step, coming back on March twelfth, talking a little bit maybe more detail on data, but also talking about goals. Um, just to prep the the board and myself, when you think about setting goals, you know, at the district level, do you typically, I guess, what in general advice do you have? And one of the things I'm always thinking of is, okay, there's there's twenty-three questions here, I can pick a lot out of there.
Sure.
Should we, should we be kind of focused on certain numbers, certain, you know, areas? Any advices we're kind of thinking of in the next couple of weeks?
Sure, absolutely. Um, in general, when we are taking a look at goal setting in general, as I was sharing the survey results, I talked about what I'll call big buckets. Talked about how academics are, and like, those first six questions had to do with academics. The next questions had to do with, uh, behavior, SEL. We only had one question on finance, we did it at the same time. There was a question that we got some feedback regarding finance. Uh, only had one question on personnel for the most part, uh, we got some feedback on that. Facilities, uh, technology, and communication. I mentioned all of those areas as, those areas as a board. Those are oftentimes viewed as your your big bucket areas. Again, you've got your academics, you've got your facilities, you've got your personnel, your finances. Think about those big bucket areas if you're looking at and or thinking about what are the areas that we need to focus most on in general? Looking at the data to an extent, but then also, what are your experiences as board members, uh, as administration? Um, and in general, the data that we have from the survey, how does that relate to those big bucket areas? Are there things that we see that we could potentially focus on moving forward? I'm just gonna throw out an example. We looked at that one question, preparing students for their future. Okay, I think that's something that everyone in this room would be somewhat concerned about, whether or not you have kids. We're talking about, you know, educating that future generation, if you will. Are there things that we can be doing more in that realm, as far as focusing on that? What would that look like? And then, how do we do that, and how do we let people know that? Okay, I use that only as an example to consider these, you know, six or seven different large bucket areas. What would be the priorities that the board might see based on these initial ten-thousand-foot, um, responses? One of the areas, again, if I can just point out, facilities were some of your highest rating. Okay, now, I don't wanna diminish any ideas or plans, you know, you may already be thinking about some work or some things you need to do. Every district has something they have to do. However, as I'm looking at your survey, both facilities and technology seem to be rated fairly high with what the district is currently doing in those areas. So maybe those would be a little more secondary potentially. And then some of these other areas, do you look at a little bit more specifically and more closely? If that answered your questions?
Absolutely, yeah. So let's go with the top five, is what I'm doing?
You know what, what I do is, um, and and updating you guys every week is maybe ask that, I I agree with with your philosophy there. Facilities and technology seem to be pretty high, pretty favorable of those five other buckets, so to speak. Um, maybe just ask the board to to think about that and then put together a really quick, easy survey of those five. Just ask them to rank them one to five, and that way you have that that feedback, um, that you give me. Um, I'll show that with Gary.
Sure.
Maybe I can guide some of the conversation next time.
Right, and then oftentimes what we, you know, as far as understanding your board roles, and I really draw board members to understand or recognize your roles. But from a board standpoint, give the big picture goals as far as the direction, you wanna see the direction, the board go, of the district go. You wanna see, point out that direction, and even a couple of bullet points potentially beneath that. It's not typically the board's role to determine how are we going to get there. Okay, so, in other words, you know, there's the target. Lead us, lead us there, type of thing. And, uh, but what would those targets be? What would be some of those big-ticket items be that you might often look at and want for?
Would we be able to have access to the two most problem areas? The physical and the communications seem to be the two problem areas. Would we be able to have the verbal feedback from the survey?
Sure, I'll provide as much data as seems feasible to do regarding those those pieces. That just wasn't part of this presentation for now, that's, that's the next phase of drilling down a little bit deeper. We're looking to, um, identify potential causes.
It'd just be interesting to hear what the comments were, you know, what people actually said. Thank you.
Sure. Well, if anything, I may have put the rain to sleep because I'm not hearing it on this time.
You've probably got cold out now.
Yeah. Well, thanks for your indulgence, walking through those pieces with us, and, um, we'll look forward to seeing you in some point in the future.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
You.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, in the meantime, um, Mike Rice is not gonna be able to join us tonight, um, so, um, we're gonna need to skip, uh, seven point oh-one and seven point oh-two. But we do have Mrs. Duckard here.
I'm gonna come back.
Just go back and talk about the audit.
Yeah, so we're gonna pop back here and talk about, um, FY twenty-three. And, um, this was our first year with, uh, New Pride term, so we had been with, um, it used to be Pine Hall, they were bought out by Wood, we had been for them, been with them for over twenty years. Um, so we had done RFP last year, and, uh, we were pleased to be working with Lotte Bach and, um, Lehman. And, um, so just to share out, we had a really good, um, experience with them, so I'm I'm glad that we were able to make the switch. We had good relationships with their, um, staff members, um, a couple of them actually live in our community, so I think that actually was a bonus for us. Um, so everything went really well with them. Um, so just to kind of report out what they see from an auditor's standpoint, um, our financial statements were, uh, consistent and clear, neutral, which is all good things that we wanna hear from an external auditor. Um, like I said, we've worked really well with them, they commended my staff, um, I commend my staff too, because they do a lot of the life work, um, with this throughout the year, and then when they're actually here on, um, our campus, they were here for two weeks just because they weren't sure how long it was gonna take this year with us being new with them. Uh, they also audit NIA, um, Northwestern Illinois Association, who were their fiscal agents for, so they, uh, worked with our department and NIA also. Um, we didn't have any issues with them, like I said, we worked really well with them, so when you get down to the nitty-gritty and look at the actual numbers, um, there's kind of two pieces to this that they provide for the district. So they provide the, um, what we're required to do per school code, you're supposed to have an external auditor come in, um, and audit your financials. So we look at, um, kind of where we budgeted for our operating budget, which would be education fund, O and M, uh, transportation and working cash funds, so those are really the four funds that we focus on, that's what the state focuses on. Um, so we had projected a twenty-seven thousand dollar surplus for those, uh, four funds. It actually came in a little bit lower than that, but still had a surplus. Um, usually the majority of that difference is based on things that are out of our control, which this year was, um, using the O and F fund uh, for gas and electricity, um, and those sorts of utilities that, um, we try to do the best we can in our budget for those, but some years they just come in a little crazy, like two-hundred percent higher than, uh, what we had budgeted for. Um, also special ed costs, um, those are also things that we try to budget as well as we can for, but, uh, we had, you know, five to eight new, um, outplace students that moved into our district. So those are things that, um, are kind of out of our control. Uh, we try to make sure that, um, we, uh, pinpoint the budget down as much as we can. Um, I'm still very pleased with how we ended the year. Um, that's as far as the the numbers themselves go. The other piece that they provide for us, because our district is committed to being transparent, um, and we have been for a long time, is we also provide the comprehensive annual financial report. That's not something that we're required to do, but Sycamore has done that, um, for the last twenty-plus years. Um, so that's the big binder that you guys get every year, and I know you all read it, all a hundred and forty pages of it. Um, we provide that to our community as well. Whether they wanna sit and read that also, um, it is up to everyone, but I'm always available for questions with that. Um, so, and we provide that, and then we also utilize that package and provide that to the ASB, when they're national, um, and that's where we receive that certificate of excellence, if we did come back. So, in a nutshell, that's the FY twenty-three audit. The board is required to approve the audit, um, every year. So I would ask the board to approve the FY twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the, uh, budget as reported?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Heads off to your team, as usual, full color.
So we must be doing.
Yeah, actually, I really love the resort, too. It looks different than what we're used to.
It is, it's even organized.
Yeah, much easier, yeah.
Because the digital version's a little tedious.
Yeah, I like that one also.
Very nice.
That would be my only comment, is that I didn't need the hard copy if we have it here, because I always go back as well, right? I mean, we, we go back to Word, I have to grab it, so. If you asked, if people did want to do, we'd just save you the printing, but if everybody wants it, then I guess I'll take a copy.
I, yeah, I always tell them that we don't, we used to get like thirty copies of it, but now I say, give me ten.
Oh, and they're provided, they're provided?
Yeah, I just need seven copies for you guys, and then Steve and Nick and I'll have them, so. We always have one laying out in my office.
Thank you.
Gary provides the logic.
Yeah.
I'll take yours off.
You need two copies?
They don't, we have it.
We're only birthday gifts.
Okay, is there, is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Shyla?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
All right, so there. So when will we pick up Mike's report? Two weeks or?
Yeah, I'll talk to him tomorrow and see if we can pick it up in March. Is that gonna be a while with Gary? It would have been the same as it was tonight. We had, we had them both on the same night. One of my questions for Gary, follow-up question for Gary is just kind of, what does that look like? How much time, any of that sort of thing? If we feel like it's gonna be longer with Gary, then, then we could, we could push it back.
I was wondering, should we put Gary back until, like? Yeah, it's depending on the time.
Yeah, it's really, it's, it's board, you know, the board's meeting. So we, we could do it, easily do it that way if we do.
Just wanna rush the goal setting.
Yeah, we can, Mike can have Mike come back in March and then have Gary come back in the fall.
That would be good if we could get the, the verbal comments that he was talking about ahead of when he comes. To be able to look at those and then, I think we could get more of an idea. Just, I, I would really like to have their verbal input to really know why they answered the way they did or at least to get more insight into what they're thinking.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to, to clump themes? If, for example, 60% of people said that the district provides equal opportunities for success, if there's an overarching theme of what we're doing to do that, you know, clump that together? Or if there is a, a theme that pops up of what's not effective, lump that all into one comment so we don't have to read each comment individually? I don't know how easy that would be to merge.
I know.
I categorize it.
Yeah, yeah.
I know Don White is one of the individuals that Gary works with. And Don is very good with, with data. So I'm kind of curious about that too, if, from their perspective, if, if they see themes to help us identify that. It, it may be that they don't, just kind of some broad, you know, comments that didn't really fit together. But I can certainly ask Gary that, yeah, if they can help us identify some themes in the data.
Excellent.
How, how does everybody feel about, you know, having Mike come in March and then have pushing Gary back until April? Just in a straw poll?
Sounds good.
To make sense.
Okay. So that brings us then to open discussion and future agenda items?
The only thing I have for that would be discussion of that, I guess it would have been January financial report and getting into what happened in Forecast Five, if that was there or similar to IASB or what.
Yeah, I'd take it similar to IASB. I'm not really sure they were able to pinpoint it either, but I know there's been a lot of conversation back and forth. So the question that Alex is, is raising has to do with the Forecast Five financial reports that the board saw tonight and back in January.
But they looked fine.
They looked fine tonight. So the issue in January was that there was, and, no, excuse me. Yeah, the issue in January that really was a year-to-date from July to December was that the FY24 December number, or the FY24 number was, was inaccurate. And that was the discussion back and forth trying to figure that out. I'm not sure Forecast Five was able to do that. But the most important part, and Eric, you're exactly right, the, the report that you saw tonight in February, it's really is that July through January is accurate. And in January, there was a large discrepancy between FY23 and FY24 year-to-date salary or, or the budget, which with the rate Alex is concerned, when we dug into that, realized that there was an error and we're able to, to get the actual numbers, there is an increase, but it's very reasonable. Pretty much what we would have expected. So the good news is, the bad news is there was an error in that, that number in January that you saw. But we've been able to, to correct reports of when you saw this evening is accurate. And, and within a range of what we were expecting.
So we're on track now. But I guess what the biggest concern to me was that initially it was said that the 24 number was right and the other two are not, and then that switched. I guess I'd like a little more detailed as to what, what went down with Forecast Five. If we could get something from that.
From Forecast Five?
Or you, whatever, or we'd have that information.
So, go back a little bit further. The issue came up right before the board meeting, literally, five, five, or something like that, the night before. So, or the, the day of the board meeting in, in January. So I did some quick looking at it, I think I texted Nicole and got, got some feedback, but it was, it was pretty rushed on my part. So I gave a quick response, I think I miscommunicated that to Alex. Eric really raised the issue. Alex is really kind of championing it for the last, you know, couple of weeks that we've gone back and forth. So I think I misspoke in, in one of my comments, so I apologize for that earlier. But I'll stand by what Eric said and what I communicated earlier today is, while we don't know where, where that Eric came from in Forecast Five and although I misspoke earlier, the numbers are, are back on track where they need to be.
Okay, I guess that acknowledgement is helpful. I appreciate that.
Hey, I, I wonder if it would be helpful to have somebody from Forecast Five come, come by and just kind of tell us what they do and how they do it. Make a presentation to us. We've been using them for, for quite a while now, but we really haven't heard from, from them. I mean, I, I know you, you do, but we haven't had a chance to really do that just yet.
Do they put that dashboard together? Or did you kind of design it or is that just kind of their default template?
No, yeah, we got both of them. Our financial software. So actually, my staff had to go back in October, July, August, September, October, November, December. Your team was on my page, so.
So if they came to present, they could tell us like, how to read that in an efficient way that would make sense to, to us, like that could be for their presentations? Here's this financial dashboard we're providing and here's what you should focus in on if you want it.
Yeah, I mean, it's all data. They're just a third-party company. They're not the origin of information. The origin of information is from our financial software. Which is the treasurer's report that I, I get to the board every, every month. The financial reports from Forecast Five are just pretty graphs and charts that you guys, it's easier to look at, I think. You can look at your date from last year versus this year.
Right, 100%. I just mean if they come out to present, they could just run through why they put it together that way, what the information they think is use, is most important. As a board member who may not have a ton of, you know, experience.
Yeah, they do it, I mean, it's for anyone who uses Forecast Five.
To, to that point, and like, I think, to the greater issue that, like you brought up, is, is the data that Forecast Five displays, the way it displays it, useful to the board? And so, like, I was kind of noodling this idea a while ago about just like what information is important for the board to make decisions on? And how should that information be displayed? And I know, like, you know, I look at that data in Forecast Five and I, I like a pretty bar graph, like anybody else likes a pretty bar graph. But it, again, like, to, just, what I'm looking for when I look at a bar graph is like, you know, tall bar, small bar, and then like another tall bar, small bar. And like, unless somebody has a secret formula for, no, Michael, like slightly higher bar, slightly lower bar, like, I guess I just, I don't know if, if that inform, like, you know, you could explain to me a bar graph 10 different ways, it's still gonna be a bar graph. Maybe we should be using the information and converting it into a different format. Like, I find much more valuable your executive summary, where you're just like, hey, here's the, here's the heartening facts on a one-page document. Here's some totals, here's what I think. Like, okay, not using big lingo. I'm not a, I'm not, you know, I try to teach finance, but I'm not like a finance expert. So to me, that makes it helpful. So I guess like to that point, is there a way, does Forecast Five have? Or maybe there is another way where we can be as a board and looking at the same data differently? So it is more usable? Or does that seem, you know, Michael, it's ridiculous, the bar graphs are.
Yeah, I guess it just depends on who likes it or what you want.
I like them, Michael, because for me, as, as a writer and like numbers, I mean, with some people, numbers are real easy and bar graphs are real easy to understand. But it would be much quicker for me just to read what you said or have you explain it to me and read it and have the numbers explained that way then rather, you know, try to figure out what this percentage means from a bar graph.
It's like pattern identification, it's the same issue we have with Gary. It's like, he has great information, he was very well put together. The most useful piece is like, okay, so the pattern that I identified was this and you should act this way. So like, to me, the Forecast Five reports are almost like, still not really decrypted patterns. So I don't find them super useful. I don't know that, maybe the community is like gonna be an uproar, but like, oh, we find these bar graphs super useful.
Yeah, we find it pretty useful.
Well, and, and maybe Alex is, you know.
It's, it's, it's how your mind does numbers. My son's outreach, but my son is like.
That's how you basically can see it, a trend change quickly.
Totally likes that.
We used to have our own spreadsheets that we kept that had the same data and it just made more sense to be able to just talk a little bit about it. So that's what we're gonna pursue to that. That's up to you, that's up to you guys, what you want and what you need.
I just think if we bring them out here, they may be able to say, maybe for other districts, we do have a different format, or here are some other options that.
Like if its only function is to catch mistakes, then like, okay, but I didn't know if we were using, if we're gonna use this data for anything other than catching mistakes.
Yeah, no, I mean, there wasn't, there wasn't a mistake.
No, I shouldn't say mistake, sorry. Catching like discrepancies that would call for, with you.
Well, it looks like Forecast Five made the mistake, or, or am I still not understanding what happened right?
Yeah, so I, I think your point is a good one and a good, there's always a good opportunity to kind of take a breath, kind of step back. Been in school districts for a long time. We can give you all the information you want and more. It's always a good, good, I think, exercise from time to time to think about, okay, any information that you get on a monthly basis, what's really worthwhile? The graphs are pretty, are, are, but are, are they useful? Because at the end of the day, if they're not useful, it's very.
We'll save us time, we'll save that.
I don't find them useful.
I would say they're useful, qualifying that they're, they're accurate. And if Forecast Five isn't producing a good product, we need to look into something else.
Well, that's what I would say.
Does Forecast Five link up with, with some other?
Yeah, we use it for our financial projections.
And, and we can drill down on this one issue in specific, but I, I guess I throw that out there kind of in general. When, when we give you all the information you get on a, on a monthly basis now, you know, at some point, maybe it is good exercise and during the school year is kind of rough. Maybe that's a July kind of working session where we just kind of have a conversation about, hey, this is really vital, this isn't. At the end of the day, the likelihood that all seven of you are gonna agree that some things like, are, are useful and not, it is not gonna happen. At some point, there's gonna be a discrepancy. And, you know, at the end of the day, what's the consensus from the board? So, you know, I think that's in general a good idea. We recommend that the board consider doing that at, at some point. At the same time, in this case, those graphs help us to catch an error.
Which didn't affect anything other than the information that we have.
That's a really good word.
So let's put it on the list of future topics to, to address and then we can, we can do that when we have a little more time to stretch out, so to speak.
Would it cause a lot of work to have both available? Could it cause a lot, a lot of work for you to?
We do it every month.
Put it in wording and use the graph?
No, like, I mean, I already do it now, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh, to me, just to refine that, I mean, if we could just add like to Jim's point, if we could just look at what information has actually been used to guide board decisions, even in the last 36 months? And I would bet that the graphs haven't been there, maybe they have, maybe they haven't. But it just seems like when you start to have hun, like lots and lots of information and you're using all this, it becomes noise and then none of it's effective. So like a recalibration might be, hey, board uses five key data points every month. Add it up, five, pick it out of a hat, but like, we use these data points. Start using those to guide decisions, like a matrix of sorts. Like a.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add that to future agenda items and think about a, a good way to, get that information, that feedback from the board in a way that's, I don't know, think also kind of time reasonable. We spend a lot of time in the board packets and that information. But try, try thinking of what we can do that in a, in a reasonable fashion.
I, I still think it would be good to have Forecast Five come and explain that to us and, and maybe there are shortcuts or maybe there are differences. You said there were, you know, what they're doing, so. Because, you know, I hate to lose the, the fact that we can let it go up with some other presentations. Because everybody has a different learning style, you know, everybody.
Right.
So, you know, if you're putting it in writing or if you're putting it in graphics, then hopefully somebody picks up one or the other that they're comfortable with.
I see, okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Any other open discussion, future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for consideration of matters related to the employment, discipline or performance of the person, personnel? Shall move, Jones?
Second.
Moving second to roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Shyla?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Reyes? Dombek?
Yes.
No, adjourn to executive session and then return for our final. Our motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Everybody wants to.
Second.
Who's in the second row in favor?
Aye.
Both? Stand to adjourn?
All right, have a good night.